We do have a quorum, so let's open our meeting. At, looks like six thirty-five to me. Uh, and I guess first thing, once again, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the remote reading notice.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion and the second, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Marilyn.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
And Norm, aye. Okay. Minutes invoices and all that kind of stuff, you do have minutes. February ninth meeting.
I see Sean, can you hear us now?
All I see is, is the icon for the video, not no audio there.
Yep, it said, there we go, he's connected, there he, alright, I think I, I think I figured it out, people.
Hey.
But can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. Uh huh, so what's your, uh, your, uh, uh, military.
Chromebook.
Uh, uh, communication equipment?
Uh, yeah, I was using my Chromebook, I switched to my phone, I don't know.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of February ninth.
That good?
And motion and the second, is there any discussion, any additions, corrections?
Uh, I have one thing that I think I wanted to, well, come on. Okay, on the second page zoning act change, MBTA community, was this checked out? Dave, did you do that?
Yeah, let me just get to it here, um. Yeah, so I had a conversation with the CMR PC. And they indicated to me that we are not an MBTA community, not to be considered one, you either have to be on or be adjacent to one. So for example Holden is adjacent to Worcester, and Worcester has an MBTA station up there on Shrewsbury Street. Um, Princeton's on there because Princeton is an adjacent town to a community that has an MBTA station. I guess.
Okay, yes, yeah.
So, in town here, we're not affected because we're not adjacent to a community or our one, or.
Okay, well, thank, thank you for the update.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Okay, any further? Questions, comments on the minutes? Okay, I believe we had a motion in the second, so, uh, roll call on this one, Marilyn?
Yeah, aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Minutes are approved. Uh, let me see. Next, notices from adjacent towns, I think I saw one. Notice in the packet, I don't believe will probably be of anybody's real interest. From the town of Princeton.
It was very hard to read.
Yeah. If I do, I.
With lots of structures and new construction.
And the way, the way I was sent in was on this blue card stock. You can try and scan it as at the latest setting possible.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In, in a nutshell, what they're doing are several zoning changes that they're proposing for the spring town meeting. If you want, I can go through them.
Uh, that's okay.
Exact, they're just doing exempt uses and prohibiting, uh, more than one principal use of a lot, okay, so they're, they're doing, I think we've got something like that already in place. Prohibit more than one principal use of a lot, I wonder if we do have that?
Well, we allow only one dwelling per lot.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, Norm, so, but didn't we do a few years ago, um, we allowed to have a temporary? Facility while one house is being torn down and another one's being put up, or did that not pass?
Yes, it did pass and it was if a house caught on fire or something like that, you may live.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, we did, we did do that, but it was only temporary, it had to be issued by the building inspector.
Correct.
Yeah.
Good enough.
Okay, uh, select notices. Male correspondent, anything? So, item four, planning board budget discussion.
Thousand bucks.
Go ahead.
Thousand bucks, Norm, I want my money back.
Yeah, right. Okay, just, uh.
I need some support, Dick.
I, I did talk with Ron. Uh, yesterday. Uh, kind of at length, I'm not really sure how far I got. Uh, but, but I did make it, you know, clear to him, and, uh. But like I say, I'm, I'm not sure if it really sunk in, uh, I, I made it very clear to him that the town cannot simply appropriate money out of our administrative account.
Okay, correct.
Uh. However, I, I did, you know, again, still, you know, make it clear, if they need that money. Fund, uh, salaries, yes, we'll, we'll agree to it. Uh, but I said that, you know, the planning board has got to take some kind of action in order to allow that, and, and actually, uh. I, I'm gonna right now say that, uh. Very, very simply, all, all we need to do is vote to. Uh, in tribute, in this case, that five thousand dollars, uh, to the budget. For the planner salary.
Is this out of a revolving account?
Yes.
Did, did Norm, did he give a, a reason why he didn't think the town could fund the, the budget or the budget line item? Did he give you any indication? Obviously, I know they're four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars short this year.
Yeah.
I mean, I hear it all the time.
Yeah. Uh, you, you know, the, the. I, I don't think he feels he has any other way of coming up with that money.
Okay. I mean, I just, I, you know, I, Dick, were you on the, uh, select board meeting yesterday?
No, I did not make it.
Alright, I mean, they were making, you know, they want to do the historical society into a, a potential. Deed restriction and, you know, the roof's like twelve grand and to replace twelve to fifteen, and that didn't seem like a big deal, so. I, I'm struggling how this five thousand is gonna make that much of a difference, not that, not that I agree, I said before. If it's needed, I'm, I wouldn't hesitate to make a motion to do it, but I, I'd really like to see them balance the budget, I mean, that's.
So how much does a canvas cost, to cover a roof? Hey, for a year, we can, can we get away with it for a year?
Yeah, and the, and the main street of Rutland, a blue canvas, that'd look beautiful, and we can put on there, please donate to historical society.
There you go, awesome.
Um, I, I guess I'm okay, I just, um. I, I, the unfortunate thing is what's probably lead me to walk away from this is our illustrious, uh, Wachusett superintendent. Who just decided to come out with a preliminary budget that's almost as, as excessive as last year.
Yeah, well.
So, I don't know if the town's gonna be able to, to finance this budget coming up, so. Except Dick with the money from the RDIC, which is only a one-time shot.
Be careful, don't count on it.
I know, it's. Yeah.
I've been hearing rumors, so be careful.
See what happens when you kill Newbro?
Yeah, right.
You can't balance the budget.
Uh, that's not the point, the point.
Oh, yes it is.
No, I'll argue with. Each kid costs eleven thousand dollars in each new house, that's twenty-two thousand dollars, I'm not getting that much from taxes on each one of those houses.
We can have that discussion, but I don't think Norm would be very happy with us right now, so, I'll, I'll back away from that right in a second.
Uh.
Yeah.
Anyway, ba- bottom line for, for me is, I, I don't think we can. I, I, I don't think we can force the, the, the town administrator or board of selectmen or anybody else to justify to us. The, the, you know, they need that five thousand dollars, I, you know.
The only, Norm, the only problem I've got is, I don't want this to become the town's personal bank.
Well, the, I, I guess the, the bottom line is, we have to approve it every year.
Yeah.
Correct.
I guess, what's the rest of the board's thoughts, cause I mean, I, I get it, we're short this year, I don't mind contributing, we have an agreement with the previous, previous town administrator. That we would contribute for three years, and I have a problem with that, but we're at our fourth year, so.
I agree with you, Tim, you know, this, uh, select board. Has, uh, when it comes to budgeting and doing, you know, their thing, they need to step up some. And if they, if they can't get their financial matters in order, well, that's their fault. And as much as I hate to say, I'd say we don't give them that money.
I, I have so much of a problem giving them the money this year, but I would like to make sure that it's not on, and they don't assume that it's gonna be there every year.
Yeah, Marilyn, that, that's what I was thinking too, I mean, I just.
Well.
Big comment.
Norm?
Well, that's what, I say we just nip it in the bud right now.
Norm, Norm?
Yeah.
This five thousand dollars, is, is this for Dave's account for his pay?
Yes.
I mean, he's. He'll still get his pay though, right?
If the town. Five thousand dollars short. Yeah, no, I'd like to specify in the, uh, uh, what do you call it, that it is for Dave. To only be used for the plan and worst, planner's salary.
I, I think that's probably a very good idea to make sure that, uh, uh, you, you know, we make the motion clear enough. Uh, that, that we're not just, you know, handing over money to the, uh, to the town to do whatever they want with it.
Right.
I, I agree.
Norm, do we have to make a motion to, see, the problem I have is if we transfer it, again, this is, this is too much living with a FICOM member. If we transfer it out of our revolving fund. Fund. Do we have the option to put it to a specific line item? That's the thing I don't know.
I believe the, you, you know, the, the revolving fund basically is how it is spent, is that the discretion of the planning board?
Correct.
Okay.
And the town, so, uh. Go ahead, I'm sorry, you finish your statement.
No, I was gonna say, maybe we have, uh, the treasurer pull a check for five grand out and do a presentation ceremony at the town meeting.
Oh my god.
This is for Mr. George, he's done an excellent job, and, uh, we want to reward him.
Right.
Well, I agree. He's done excellent since he's been here, and we, and, and we've, you know, we set up a precedent that we were gonna help fund, but he is. Uh, you know. Loaned out to the town on other things, so they have a financial obligation. And it, it's not the, our board's fault that they can't handle their budget. I, I don't like it, it's, it's. It's, it goes more than just, you know. Us, you know, being, being the bad guy if we don't, they're not doing their obligations. And I know it's an election year, but. You know, if they can't handle this funding, what else are they gonna do, you know? If I don't pay my bills, they, I get in trouble. I don't get bailed out.
That's a good point, Sean. I don't know.
Well.
And it doesn't say anywhere that it needs to come out, it, it said, but it does say they have an obligation to pay his salary.
My fear is, Sean, is with this deficit, that, um, some drastic decisions could be made and, and. Us giving this, this five thousand is a, is a token to at least get us through one more year of financial instability in the town. I, I mean, Norm, I guess that's my thinking, I, I, I've backed off from my, my two weeks ago rant. So, I, I, I feel that maybe. Again, I don't want this to become the bank of, of the town budget, but I think in this case, this time, we should probably. Contribute, but again, however we make the motion, it should be specifically for the town planners, um. Budgetary support or something like that, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there, I'm not sure how to word it, but. I want to make it clear that this doesn't go to the general fund to be used for whatever is needed, it goes to support the tasks that we need from our planner.
Yeah, well. You, you, you know, and I.
I don't know how to get that.
I, I, I lo- I love your argument there, but, but the bottom, the bottom line is, you know, no matter what we say, the money ends up going into the big pot and then is doled out.
Yeah.
You know, and that, and that's, you know, regardless of whether you're talking this, whether you're talking, uh, excise tax that comes in, whether you're talking, uh, you know. Sewer funds or license fees or fines or, like I say, you know, it, it gets dumped into the big pot. Uh, so, you know, we can, we can make a little noise. Uh. But it reached my way of thinking, you know, that's about it, the other side, I, I just can't help but think of is that, you know, if. A, a, as long as we are contributing something, we have a little bit of a hold. On what they're doing with Dave. You know, uh, in, in, in other words, uh, you, you know, uh, I'll, I'll just, I'll just make a, a wild. Uh. I don't know what I want to call it, being a wild scenario, that I don't think could possibly happen. Okay, suppose we don't support the five thousand dollars. And board of selectmen or town administrator says, okay, Dave, uh, you're working strictly for RDIC from now on, that's the only work you're gonna be doing.
I don't think you break a contract like that, though.
Uh, don't be surprised, Sean, that couldn't happen, Norm, Norm's got a great point.
You know, I don't, I don't believe that would happen, to be perfectly honest with you, I'm just thinking, it's just a, you know.
Do, do, do we have to do it now, or can we do it at a next meeting, and can we find out from town council, or if, if this is the right way to do it, or can we find out from somebody else?
Well, no, who has to pay town council?
Well, I, I know, but hey, I'd rather be safe than sorry.
I, I, I don't think there's any real need to, uh. To talk about it, the, the, the bottom line on, uh. The whole damn thing is, you know, we have been right along, we, we have been contributing this money. It's not something new.
Even though we weren't told, yes.
Well, you know, back when we were told.
Yeah.
We were. And we didn't even formalize anything then.
Yeah, Norm, I got a proposal, we'll contribute five thousand if they give us our stipend back. Sorry, I gotta use a bargaining chip whenever I can.
Yeah, right.
It's politics, you gotta use bargaining chips.
It, it is, it is politics, and I, and I would agree to, uh, you know, giving them the five thousand and then writing. For what that's worth, which is probably not even the paper it's written on, that this would be, you know, the, for Dave, and that would only be used for planning board purposes.
Yeah, yeah, it will be.
It's, uh, to be renegotiated every year, I mean, that makes it sound like we would even go up. We would, but.
Yeah. But then you'll lose money, uh, next year, I think the housing market's going down.
Oh no, Cleese is gonna get Noble Hill fired up, right?
Don't even talk like that, Dick, what are you doing?
Okay.
I'll tell you what.
We do not have to vote that tonight.
Alright.
Well, maybe, yeah, I have another proposal, maybe the, the builders in town should, uh, contribute to the planning board planner's salary.
I'll tell you what, I wouldn't mind if you'd let me build houses. You guys put that dumb growth bylaw in, it wasn't your fault, and, you know, Stillings and Dibs and those guys put that in and screwed everything up. A lot of guys aren't building in town because of it. Really?
Any more discussion on this?
No, Norm, um, it, it, when, do you have a meeting scheduled with, uh, FICOM for budget purposes?
Not specifically.
Okay.
I, I have not received any kind of invitation, I don't know if Dave has or not.
No, I haven't, I've been given any schedule, uh, with some dates to keep in mind.
I just thought it'd be a good idea to, to bring it up before, let them know, because, I, I mean, I, I, I know Karen knows because she's heard me in my tirades, but, uh. Um, I, it'd be good for the board to know that, uh, this is part of the budgeting solution that the planning board's helping the town with, I mean, I don't know, I mean, they're. They're ultimately the one who brings the budget before the selectmen. So anyhow, I, 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 Norm, I guess, I'm, I'm with, with Marilyn, you know, like, I think we should just, next meeting, decide what we're gonna do and just do it.
I like what you said, Tim, and I think it should become before the finance committee to let them know. What we're doing.
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea.
And do you need a motion to table this till the next meeting?
Uh, no, I don't think so, we'll just keep it on the agenda for next.
Okay.
Isn't five grand like peeing in the ocean?
See, that's what I say when you got four hundred thousand dollars to say.
Anyways.
Well, yeah, we're, I don't know, we're, we're talking, I don't know what it is, four, five percent of the salary, something like that.
Yeah. Well, Dave's making two hundred K, so what's five thousand worth?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Onward, next item, we have an A and R two thirty-five Glenwood Road. Of which I believe you all have a copy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, um, I, I'm gonna ask. On this particular one, did anybody read the A and R? Aren't you supposed to have access to your lot?
Uh, Dick, you're thinking what I am.
I, just to cut in real quick, Dick, I did send an email to the architect, I'm sorry, the Lanceria that prepared this. I asked them the question whether it was physically and legally possible to get access to lots one and two from East County, I did not receive an answer. Uh, the property owner is with us tonight and possibly her builder, maybe they can weigh in on this?
Well, after going by it, I think lot one is, is, uh, off, off the road, they try to get up in the air, is, is. And you're supposed to have a leveling area for your driveway, on, you know, before, when you come down the hill on, before you hit sixty-eight, I don't think that could be done. On that lot.
Yeah, and, and that's, Dick, why, I, I looked at, when I saw this, and Norm, I saw it says access and utility easement for benefit of lot one. And it was basically the entire frontage of lot two, and that, that, that bothered me, I, I didn't think it was legitimately correct. And for an A and R unless they were thinking of using a common driveway.
Okay, do we have anyone representing the applicant, uh, on board here to comment on this?
Uh, the owner is muted, I'm asking her on mute.
Hi. Uh, yes, we were planning on having a common driveway.
Without that common driveway, is there access, reasonable access to lot one?
Well, we have a cart road that goes up straight, uh, alongside that, so yes. That could be paved easily.
Okay, you're saying there is an existing cart road?
Yep.
From Route sixty-eight?
No, not from sixty-eight, from Glenwood.
Correct, and when I was seven years old, I used to go up there. With a big field in the back.
Yeah, but that's, that's. Norm, isn't that the, a definition of a lucenary frontage by having an access office that's not part of the frontage? Isn't that what our definition was? Or at least by, um, our, by KP?
The, the, the frontage has to provide reasonable access.
Yeah. I'm struggling with this one, cause. I, I don't, and, and again, this is, I'm not an attorney, but this doesn't seem to me like a legit, lot two, I have no problem with, I'm fine with that, but lot one doesn't seem like it's. Falls into the definition of A and R.
Well.
It has frontage and area, it's an A and R.
Yeah, but you also have to be able to show you have legal, physical, practical access from the street to the lot itself. I think, I think, I don't want to coach the applicant too much, but they would have to tell you that at some great expense, they could put a driveway from East County Road to lot one. But it's prohibitively expensive, so they want to explore some other alternative that might be acceptable to the board, but I, I don't know that I've heard that from the, from the applicant.
You know, this, this is what I need, I need someone to explain, you know, in, in, in detail, can someone put in a driveway? From Route sixty-eight into that lot one?
Hi, this is Scott Zeke, I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Yes.
Uh, if you, if you look at the slopes that continue further down sixty-eight as you head towards Hubbardston, they're very, very similar sloping lots, and many of them have been developed in, in such a fashion that the town planner had just described. There are switchback driveways or, uh, driveways that cut across the, the cross slope of the lots. I think that you, you would be able to gain access to both Lots One and Two. And I think that's been demonstrated on lots that are very close by this particular development.
I do believe, Norm, that was one of the first, uh, common driveways in Rutland that he's referring to.
The house direct, the house directly next to Lot One does not have a common driveway.
Well, I, I'm not even saying a common driveway, Kate, I'm, I'm saying your neighbors may be a quarter mile down the road. Uh, they have, they have a similar slope that, that you have on your lot.
Oh, yes.
And these are privately developed lots, it's not a common shared drive. It just happens to be a long sloping driveway.
Scott, this is, uh, Tim Orwell. The, the only reason that I questioned this is your, is your, uh, note on Lot Two that, that, that threw me for a loop. When I saw that, uh, the utility easement, I never have a problem with, but it, when I saw access for the benefit of Lot One, that, that indicated to me that there was no access for Lot One because of that comment. So that's the reason why I questioned it.
So I, I, I do apologize, I'm not the person that prepared the plan, uh, I, I'm not. Yeah, I'm, I'm not an employee of Thompson and Liston. Um, my understanding of that note, uh, would be, i- it would be when the lots are being developed, that could be a way for utility vehicles to get in there before a final driveway is established, because it's a little bit of a, a, not as steep a slope when you're cutting across the, the cross slope from Lot One, or excuse me, from Lot Two to Lot One.
Ha- has, how many of you people been by it and seen it?
I, I've driven by it, Dick, and it, it was a nice slope. It wasn't as bad as Britnell. So, I, I mean, I guess I'm okay with it, I just, I just didn't like that note, Norm. That's the thing that threw me for the loop, 'cause it was, it was preluding a common driveway that hasn't been sent to us, 'cause if I'm not mistaken, that's special permit.
Yeah, um, it depends, if they wanna do a two-lot common driveway, that's a site plan review, that's a separate zoning process on what's happening here. Or if they wanna do three lots, that's a special permit. But there's nothing on this plan that sanctions a common driveway, so that's a separate process. If the board, if the board approves the A and R, of course.
So, wo- would the board be comfortable approving with conditions, uh, with that condition being to remove that note for the utility easement?
I don't, I don't think so. I.
It is, yeah, that's, it's very, very uncommon for us to condition, uh, approval of an A and I lot. Uh, I, I can't remember that we ever have. Um, you know, I, I, I guess, and, and again, maybe I'm a little bit, this is kinda half-blind here, but, uh, just the fact that it might be a steep slope, going, going up from the road, unless it's an absolute cliff. You know, the, the soil can be moved and, uh, they, they can go up on a diagonal and, and that sort of thing. Uh, you know, it's, it's not the same as if there was a wetland crossing that they, that they had to do. Uh, well, you know, where it's just plain impossible. Uh, and to be perfectly honest with you, uh, that note of the easement means nothing to me. Because they could just as well have submitted this without that note on there. It doesn't change what they're actually doing at all.
So I think to your, your point, Norm, uh, you know, you could get access to both those lots. Obviously, you could spend a ton of money on retaining walls and moving soil. Uh, I think the fact of the matter is, it, it wouldn't be required. I think you could do it with regressing and a, a well-thought-out approach.
Yeah, somebody said that, that, instead of the mention a common driveway by the house on Glenwood coming up that way. And, um, for, actually for all three lots.
Oh, right. Uh, you know, it, it's, it's there, but it's not preferable. And, and definitely, you know, just based on the house next door to Lot One, which already has this, basically the same frontage and even worse slope. Uh, it is definitely a doable access to sixty-eight.
All right, I'm fine. It's, hey, is, is Sean still on? Uh, we must have lost him.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still here.
No, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use your speech. A caveat emptor.
Let the buyer beware.
Yeah, so, I, I'm, I guess I'll make a, uh, a motion to endorse.
Actually, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt for one quick second? I just wanted to be, be clear that whatever car path you have on Glenwood Road is not gonna be a common driveway at this point without further zoning relief to access other lots. There's no vested rights here because you haven't, it's not a pre-existing condition, right now, it's one parcel. So is that, just want that to be, be out there.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, Tim, thank you.
Well, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to endorse.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, Marilyn.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Norm, aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much, have a great night.
Yep.
Good night, guys.
Okay, next agenda item is Maple Hill Estates subdivision, which once again, I don't think we really have anything.
You are, you are right, there is nothing that we received from the consulting engineer or, or otherwise on this matter.
Okay. Then, directly onto number seven, Bryce Lemon Estates. Uh, we do have a report from Quinn Engineering, uh, dated February nineteenth, which I believe is kind of their final review of, wait a minute. Uh, that, that, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on, no. That's for the next, that's for the next agenda item, number eight. Do we have anything else, just in general, on Bryce Lemon Estates? Not, not concerning the, uh, the realignment of the road in Phase Three.
Uh, realignment?
Yep, not, not regarding that.
Not regarding that.
And, and I guess, I, I guess I would say, do we have anything particularly regarding Phase One or Phase Two?
I just, I, I was gonna ask Clee if there's been any further discussion with the Phase One, uh, gentlemen and, or homeowners about the, uh, the water issue? And has, has there been any consensus from them that they understand that this is gonna be a spring-type fix?
Well, I haven't spoke with them since the last meeting, uh, at all. It's too much snow out there right now to, um, to actually show them or do anything with that. Uh, but I'll tell you, it, when the spring comes, you'll be able to, they'll be, we'll all be able to see, you know, the water's coming from a lot of different directions, that's gonna be, you know, nobody expected that kind of water up there. But I'm, I, I told you, I'm committed to fixing it, and I'm gonna get up there and fix it somehow, so I will do that. I do want to say on this, I know I promised you guys I should have, I would have most of this stuff done by the fifteenth, um, of February, I'm running a little bit behind, but I've got just about everything all buttoned up, I went out and caused all kinds of commotion, we picked up all those houses as, uh, Carl had asked here, uh, you know, and, and so we tied them to where the shut-offs are, the front yard, the corners of the house, and we added those to the plan, that took, yeah, that took a few days. But other than that, I should be, I should be pretty much done with everything on Carl's list. Hopefully here by the middle of next week at the latest. And I promised the fifteenth, but I'm a little behind.
Was that also the pump station, the right-of-way being a foot path wide, or?
Yeah, I, I, I think I have a, I think I have a solution to that, I, I've gotta go out and talk to the homeowner, but I was gonna give him some land behind his house, or offer to give him some land behind his house if he'd let me have that little piece of easement. I can probably give him another five thousand, seven thousand square feet back there that I own still. And that would make the lot nicer, and, you know, the, that, that pump station driveway was there when he bought the house, so, um, I hope, I hope that would, that, that would solve that, but that's, that's my plan at least right now.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, uh, tree, uh, Clee, throw in a tree, too. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, anything else on Bryce Lemon, Phase One, Phase Two? Okay, then we'll go to item number eight on the agenda, which is the continuance of the public hearing on the modification of the definitive plan. And here's where we do have a report from Quinn Engineering dated February nineteenth.
So you're opening up the public hearing?
Yes.
At seven eighteen or something like that?
Something like that.
Yep, I got it, Dick.
Thank you.
February fourth?
February nineteenth.
Uh, okay.
I have not seen that here, but I must have circulated that to the board separately?
But, I think it, I, did he, did he date it, hold on?
I have, uh, I think you're right, that there's a February nineteenth response, which I must not included in the packet accidentally, but you had, you have a copy of it, Norm?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
This is, you, you printed out a copy for me when I was up, well, wait, I, I think when I was up there, picking up my packet.
Yeah, and I put it in the paper packets that I delivered to the board, but I didn't update the electronic version.
Okay.
Oh, I'm all set, I have it.
I apologize for that.
Okay, um, you know, I, I don't know if anybody wants to go all the way back to, uh, it was an earlier report. Uh, the initial report, I think, was February fifth. If anybody really wants to go back to that, we can, however, this report dated, uh, February nineteenth. Uh, in, in summary, in, in summary, basically, uh, okay, since, I guess, d- does everybody else have this?
I do.
I have it on my email, but I don't, I can't, I, it's not in front of me here, but I, I know what it says, so I'm good.
Uh, anyway, uh, n- number one, it says the updated plan must be stamped by a registered engineer. It says resolved, the plans have been stamped. It says updated division plan that reflects revisions of the roadway must be prepared. Uh, it says no comment, need is indicated that the A and R plan has been recorded. Uh, I'm assuming we have that.
No. You can't, you can't give an A and R until you approve the road alignment. Once he approved the road alignment, I'll give you the A and R, and then that, that will satisfy that condition, that's what he meant by that.
Okay. Uh, okay, the next item, three, you're talking about a vertical curve and all of that, so it has a K-value, listen, thirty-seven. Uh, response was that need is indicated that the site distance holds the same as the intent, uh, as the design plan, so they're saying that is resolved.
Does Carl give us any comments back on that? I mean, he gave a comment, Needs gave a comment, and then did Carl approve that comment from, from Needs? That's what I wanna see.
Well, Kyle put it resolved.
Kyle said it was resolved on there.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Item number four, detention area four-one not depicted on the plan, resolved. It's on the plan now. Uh, number five, applicant should clarify if the storm scepter, blah, 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 and so forth, it says resolved, need is indicated that the unit is installed and is the previously approved unit. Uh, number six, sewer utilities in Main Street, the discharge to the pump station must be depicted. Uh, resolved, the sewer utilities have been updated. Uh, number seven, hydrant location depicted on the profile doesn't match the location. Uh, and it says, resolved, the hydrant has been revised. And, uh, then it says any sheet affected by the proposed, uh, revision must be updated so a complete set of updated plans can be maintained. And once again, says resolved, the site plan has been updated to reflect the proposed revisions. Have we gotten those updated plans yet?
Yeah. Everybody did. Electronic.
We don't have a paper copy in the office here.
We, we sent them electronically, but I, I, we were gonna, I guess, print them when they were done.
Yeah, I mean, I take you up on your offer to come up with them, with that stapler.
Okay. And I'll, I'll replace them, yeah, no, no problem.
I think the board is agreeable to that as a solution to just replace individual sheets.
Got it.
Cool.
Okay, anybody, any comments on this final Quinn report? Oh, any further comments on the, uh, basically the, um, modification process in general?
Norm, the only one I had, and, and I know I brought this up to Clee earlier, is that, that, um, I thought the design was gonna change for that, uh, drainage, uh, design, uh, right at the curve, behind that lot on the curve.
It is.
Is that gonna be on this plan, or is that gonna be updated on the subdivision plans?
It'll be updated on the subdivision.
That, that, okay, 'cause you said that, that tube is just ridiculously expensive and, and doesn't really satisfy the need.
Right.
So.
I, I agree, and I, and it, and it's a hell of a lot of maintenance. So I, I wa, I'm gonna redesign that, but for the time being, which, what's been approved, I just left on there so that we could get through this process.
Okay, great, Clee, I, I, I just wanted to, to basically understand that, 'cause I probably said that, I thought it was gonna get changed in the plan, but if it's not till you start development of the lots, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
All right, good enough, that's, that's all I had.
Okay, anybody else, anything further on this, uh, amendment or modification?
Oh, the modification's on the bend, and, uh, I got a question. Behind the Wentworth home, it looks like some kind of a leach field. Is there an easement to it?
Leach field?
Well, you tell me, it looks like a bunch of piping in that, in two lots.
Well, that's what I was talking about, Dick.
That's the detention area, uh, Dick, that's the, um, you know, where the, where all that drainage is supposed to.
Well, right now it's a detention pond, but this does not look like a detention pond, it looks like a, some kind of a leach field.
Yeah. What that is, that, that actually i- is a storage area for stormwater. What that is, that, that actually i- is a storage area for stormwater, uh, and, um, I'm, I'm gonna.
How do you clean it?
That's the problem. I, I'm gonna revise that. It, it, it's two hundred thousand dollars to build that. It's, uh, it's crazy. It, it, it's, it's crazy. A detention pond would, would be just as, do just as good, and you can at least clean it. Once, all those things, you get, you get sand in them and, and it, and you're never gonna get it out. Um, but it, it's, it, I, I have, I haven't had the chance to redesign it, and Kyle made a comment that it wasn't on the plan any longer, so we put it back on the plan. And now, and we're gonna come back in with a redesign of that area that hopefully has the same amount of storage that those piping, that that piping does.
And, and some kind of an easement in order to get onto, onto that piece of property to, to work on it?
Yeah, that, that already exists, I believe. It's to the right-hand side of Lot ninety-nine, I think, is where the easement is. On the site plans. I don't think it's on that plan, but it's on the site plans.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Well, that's the only thing I had a question of.
Okay. Uh, I would say that it is probably reasonable for us to close the public hearing. I think we have a final report from Quinn. That's what we were looking for.
Norm, should, should we ask if there's any public comment?
Well, that, yes, we should. Is there any one from the public who wishes to comment on this? And I'm hearing nothing. Do I have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call vote. Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye, seven twenty-eight.
Norm, aye. Um. I don't know, it seems to me that, uh, it's, unless anybody has any problem, uh, it's appropriate for us to approve this modification.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification. Excuse me.
I'll second.
Any more motion in a second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call vote. Once again, Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have to sign?
Not yet.
Do we have to sign this baby, this modification, or is this, this vote just basically get entered in and then the updated drawings come into us and get replaced?
Um, y- yes, and partly yes. What I have to do is draft a, a decision, not a full decision like was previously issued on this, just a decision that captures the two modifications. Uh, then that would be the decision that the board would sign. Um, and then, and then the plans.
Okay, great. Thanks.
The only time you sign plans is if they get recorded. You don't have to sign, this doesn't get recorded, so you don't have to sign it, I don't think. Does it? Just the site plan, right?
I, yeah, I don't think the plans have to be endorsed, but the, but the decision has to be signed.
It might have to be if it has to go, it has to be recorded, 'cause, uh, if it has to be recorded, the plan has to be signed. And I think this has to be recorded, doesn't it? 'Cause it changed the alignment of the road?
Yes, I would say so.
Well, wasn't this gave a modification? It wasn't a, this was a modification?
Right, it's a modification, so, yeah, we, we record the A and R plan and that takes care of it. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was thinking, Cle. It's just a modification, so you don't have to go through the whole recording process.
You're correct. You are correct. The, the only other thing is that waiver on that, is that you get into that or well, we have to, we have to approve, it's part of the same public hearing. The waiver on the cul-de-sacs.
Oh, yeah.
I thought that was part of this, what, modification that we were just discussing, 'cause.
It's two separate, one's a waiver. This is road alignment, the other was a waiver.
Was that two separate hearings, or I thought?
No, it was on the same hearing, but it's two separate items.
Well, we just closed the hearing, didn't we?
Right, so you can, that's all right, that's now you have to vote on it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, 'cause I know we beat that thing to death.
Um. Okay, I'm, I'm not certain that we necessarily have to take uh, another vote. It was a single public hearing.
Yeah, it, it included the, it included the, uh, waiver, correct?
The, you didn't even mention it. I, I think you have, it's not the same as the modification. It's a, it's a waiver. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't know is the answer, but.
I guess if the board wanted to take a conservative approach, you'd, um, take a motion to reopen the hearing, what, to rescind your prior motion to close the hearing? And then make it plain that you're doing two things. You, you granted two modifications from the approved subdivision. One modification is to allow no island plantings for any of the six cul-de-sacs, and the other modification is to approve the layout for phase three roadway modification. Then close the hearing and then vote it again.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, what Dave just said. To reopen the, uh, hearing?
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're rescinding your prior vote to close it.
Yeah, rescind and to reopen and the whole thing, what, whatever you said.
Okay, I, I wanna take that as a motion to rescind the closing of the hearing. Okay, but that's a motion. It needs a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, this is just to reopen the hearing. Okay, Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Okay, we're back in the hearing again. So now.
You gotta say what Dave said.
Norm, if I, if I, if I may, I believe we also need to rescind the motion to approve the modification as a slate. So Sean and Marilyn would have to rescind that motion.
Modification in what?
Well, um, you guys have made a motion to approve the modification. Um, so I believe we would need to rescind, Sean and Marilyn would have to rescind that vote, so we can then make a new motion that's more specific. Does that make sense?
We have to rescind two things. We have to rescind, A, the, uh, the motion to approve, and then we have to rescind the closing of the hearing, correct?
Correct. So you already rescinded closing the hearing. Now you just have to rescind approving the modification, and since Sean and Marilyn were the ones that voted, they would have to be the ones to rescind it.
Tamika, who, uh, who made the motion?
You, you did.
Until long now. I did.
You made the motion and Marilyn seconded.
Well, I rescind my motion, um, of whatever that entails for that, all of it.
All the socks?
Okay, so I, I have a motion to rescind the approval of the modification. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Once again, roll call vote. Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye. I'm so glad that I went to that little program on progress rules.
You and me both, Norm. I sat through that with Karen.
Norm, we're gonna nail this. We're ready.
We're ready, yeah, right. Now.
So I make a motion that we approve the, uh, the new typical sold the, uh, the, uh, um, what do I want?
Okay, this, this is, yeah. This, this is weird, because we now have a public hearing that is open. We don't vote approvals in an open public hearing.
We gotta close the hearing again.
So we've gotta close the hearing again.
Right, so Norm, I'd make sure there's no one to discuss the subdivision amendment for the cul-de-sacs. And that's, and that's your obligation in the public hearing.
Okay, I'll buy that. Okay, is there anyone that wants to, uh, comment regarding the cul-de-sac plantings? And the, and the waiver that is part of this public hearing?
I, I just wanna say it's, it's the islands and the cul-de-sacs, and it's a waiver for the requirement of an island in the cul-de-sac. And the road alignment. That's, that's how I.
I think you're correct.
Oh. When we get back to our approval, we'll be a lot more specific on that.
And, and Norm, and, and maybe David can help. We discussed about removing this from our subdivision regs, correct?
We've done it, I think.
Yeah, I thought we did that in the previous, okay. So all this is doing, my next question is, is all the other subdivisions uh, that are approved, are we gonna have to go through the same like Noble Hill, uh, down on Pleasant Dale? All those are gonna have to go?
All of those, yeah. There's two cul-de-sacs around.
I just wanted to get it in the, in the meeting minutes, that, just so we don't forget, and we've got it somewhere, that all approved subdivisions that haven't been built are gonna have to go through the same process.
Uh, I would say it's up to Cle not to forget.
It is. And believe me, I don't wanna go through this again. Well, I think that's pretty much what held up my road acceptance, really. I'll get that done, believe me.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call. Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Now, does anyone wanna make a very, very detailed motion about what we are approving?
I'll pass that to Dave.
Well, Dave cannot make a motion.
Don't make a motion. I'll make the motion if you help me along.
All right, so item one is a modification. You have two modifications. One is to not require any planting islands in any of the six cul-de-sacs that are part of Bryce Lemon Estates.
Runs are going along. Which they do, they probably. Um, you hear me? Right. Come here, this one.
Yeah, fire alarm?
It's a fire alarm, and Lisa set it off cooking. There we go.
Okay.
Have Marilyn done?
Something or other.
Uh, Tim does that when he, uh, makes hamburgers in the house.
All right. Make a motion that we ask the, um, has, okay, somebody help me here.
Uh, to approve?
A motion, I make a motion to approve the.
I'll say realignment of the roadway.
Realignment of the roadway.
And to grant the waiver.
And to grant a waiver on the, uh, removal of other socks, islands. Maybe, not removal, but, yeah.
Well, the planted islands.
Planted islands.
That good?
Okay, I have a motion in a second, uh, excuse me, uh, before I go for a vote, does everybody feel that that covers it?
I do.
Yeah, we're good, yeah. We're good.
Okay. No further discussion? Okay, roll call. In favor, Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Okay, we're done with it.
Thank you. Is that all you have for me tonight, guys?
Uh, Cle, I don't know if you wanna stay on for item eleven? These are proposed zoning changes for, uh, annual town meeting?
Tonight.
Yeah, I, I, maybe, let's see, yeah.
One of which is the zone, uh, the zoning for the plaza?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I should probably stay on for that, yeah.
Okay, next item, item nine, revision to subdivision regulations, roadway cross-section and other topics. Am I not exactly sure where we left this?
Well, I thought we're gonna put an extra half inch of, uh, top paving, paving on. And some of us are, at least I wanted to keep the gravel where it was. And you made a mention of, uh, reducing.
Yeah.
I, if I could a- add a little comment to that, I build roads in a lot of towns. Nobody requires the amount of gravel that Rutland has, so. It's always twelve inches of, of dense grade, which is an inch and a half minus. This stuff, you know, you got six inch minus for eighteen inches, and then you got dense grade for six inches. And, and on top of it, you only have two inches of pavement and one inch, two inches of base and one inch of top. One inch of top is hard to even, I mean, yeah, it saves money probably, but, you know, a little bit, but it's hard to even make the thing work at one, one inch of pavement up for top. You know, so I mean, I, I would, it, it would save money, actually, and it would, I think it would be better if you had just the twelve inches of dense grade, and then you have the, uh, two and a half of base and one and a half of top. That's, that's what every other town does, uh, just so you know. I don't know who came up with the, the eighteen inches of gravel under the road. That must've been Sullivan or something.
I think it was prior to him.
No.
I think it's when your father was on the planning board.
Yeah. He wasn't, the only board he was on was the Finniest Board.
Uh, he was, he was with my father on the planning board.
Oh, really? I didn't know that. Wow.
Yeah.
So, okay, Cle, when did you own the gravel pit?
Long time ago.
Well, I, actually, that site I'm building and holding is, uh, has got a lot of gravel in it.
Norm, do we wanna act on this, or this was just a discussion point?
Okay, we, let me see, we, we do have to hold a public hearing to revise a subdivision regulation. We don't have a public hearing.
Uh, we skip, we wanna get this on a town meeting?
It does not have to go to town meeting.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's right, it's regulations, not a bylaw, I'm sorry.
Um.
Should we, uh, plan a public hearing at our next meeting for this?
Probably not a bad idea.
Do we need to get something written up then that defines what we're really trying to do to let everybody know?
Okay.
Well, I thought Kyle did.
Well, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna try something here. Uh, I'm not gonna make a motion, I'm gonna leave it to someone else, but I'm gonna describe what I'd like to see for a motion. Okay. Uh, I would like to see a motion to ask Kyle Holker of Quinn Engineering to create a new typical cross-section drawing showing, and I'm gonna put my own word in here. Uh, the twelve inches of the bank gravel in two courses with a minimum of four, maximum four inch stone in it, instead of the six inch. And then, uh, an additional six inches of whatever they call it, slick gravel, followed by, what, two and a half inches of base coat asphalt and one and a half of, uh, finish coat.
So, Norm, that gives a twelve and a half inch or twelve and a half inch, um, um, sub base or base of stone?
Eighteen inch, eighteen inches. Two courses of, two, two six inch courses, compacted with maximum stone at four inches. And then an additional six inches of what, whatever the slick gravel or whatever they call it on top.
Yeah. But that gets rid of the twenty-four that we used to have, correct?
That does.
Alright, I'm okay with that, because I, I want to compromise, because Carl said that, that we were ridiculous for the twenty-four inches, and, uh, twelve to eighteen was, was more of a state, state, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Common in the state of Massachusetts. Yeah.
Usually with four inch, I got it, it's still a crush. It's still a crusher run, though. You know? Twelve inches of dense grade, I think is, might be better than twelve and, uh, six. The dense grade is inch and a half, it, it really packs up nice. I, I, I'm just it costs more than the other stuff, so I'm probably costing my, myself money, but um, just making it, just I'm just telling you from a, I would, I would ask, I would get an opinion on that, because that twelve inches of four inch minus is, it's still a crusher run, because usually you get six inch minus out of the bank, but you could, you could find some that's like that, but then you end up with, um, you know, if you put just twelve inches of the inch and a half minus, that's all crusher run, and that's that's the best stuff there is. Just, I'm just giving you my opinion, I, you guys make the rules, not me, but I build the roads. I'll ask on it anyway, are you changing the cross-section for this, for the road when you're doing this, Norm? Is that what you're talking about? On the, on the detailed drawings?
Yeah.
So.
Not as, not as far.
The trees, because you show trees every fifty feet, but you should, you should say two per lot. On that, too, that, that's on that same cross-section, or it usually is.
Okay, okay, that's something I think we could probably discuss in the public hearing.
Okay.
Anyway. That, that's a suggestion for someone to make a motion.
I, uh, Tamika sent you, listen to that, I would like to, uh, make a motion um, to categorically repeat what Norm said as my motion.
Not categorically, I second on that.
Got it.
And, uh, and, and a, a sub portion of that motion is to fund Carl to do it.
You got five grand to play with. To fund him.
Hey, you know, I'm not, I'm not an engineer or anything like that, but I heard this, uh, they had this stuff, it's called concrete for roads. A concrete road? I heard they're really, really good.
Oh, no, you're being signed.
California.
Yeah, they, they have that, uh, uh, Sean, in the Midwest, too, they don't believe in asphalt for roads, everything's concrete, baby. The problem with New England is it would be a California, or it'd be a crack everywhere with, where we heave roads around here.
Yeah, the thong, the thong, the thong. Imagine with the snow on it, too? I mean, those roads in California get, when they're wet, they're like ice.
Oh, no, the, uh, the, the roads in the Midwest are concrete, they get a lot of snow, it's, it's just how they, they, they put, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Like little, uh, waves in them, like little rifts, so you can get the traction, it's not, it's not, uh, uh, what's the word? Uh, slick pavement, it's actually got, uh, the way they lay it down and put it together, it's wave, or it's got little, uh, I don't even know how to describe it, little traction points in it. Anyhow, we're on asphalt in New England.
Okay, I heard a motion, did I hear a second on that one?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, then a roll call again, Marilyn.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Norm, aye. So we'll see what, uh, Carl comes up with. And probably can schedule a public hearing, I don't know about for next meeting or thereabouts, I don't know. Dave, any thoughts on that?
Uh, we've already advertised for the next meeting of the, of March ninth, so I did realize it would be the second meeting in March.
Oh, okay. Okay, item ten, Community Preservation Act, discussion.
What the hell is that?
I think, Dave, uh, this one's yours.
Uh, it's actually not mine, this was a request of Peter Crane to have this item on the agenda for discussion, I um, have it on the agenda as, as his request.
Oh, okay. Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so there have been discussions among a few people in town about uh, uh, trying to get the Community Preservation Act passed in this town, it was tried, I don't even remember when, it was a while ago, and it failed miserably, and I think that's partially because of the impact to taxes, and partially because of, uh, there was not enough information given to the town to understand the benefits of it, and all anybody ever talked about was the tax increase. Community Preservation Act is a program by the state to allow uh, funding for open space protection, historic preservation, um, outdoor recreation, and affordable housing. Uh, the example I love to give for this is the recent failure of the town to acquire Davis Farm when it came up for sale. Uh, and the reason is simple, the town did not have money to purchase the property, and there was no money finagling to make that possible. The only way to change the town's ability to have money is to get money to do it. This Community Preservation Act puts a surcharge of a given percent on to people's real estate tax bills, some of which is then matched by the state. To give you an, or, uh, an idea about the order of money that we're talking about, if it, the Community Preservation Act passed a town meeting, and the amount that was agreed to was one half of one percent surcharge, then um, I believe the average tax bill would go up twenty-six dollars a year, or if you prefer, six dollars a quarter, and it would raise eighty-eight thousand dollars approximately for these four activities. Um, and then there, the, we would get more money from the state also because they have a match. It's not clear to me exactly what the match is. Uh, it is very clear that it's less than a hundred percent match, because that only comes from people, for towns and cities that do three percent tax surcharges, and that's not what we're talking about. But even if it were fifty percent, that's still a hundred twenty thousand dollars, which we could set aside either for future land purchases, or hmm, there's a historical building in town that people want to, that needed a roof replacement that we, those discussed at length last night at the select board meeting. Um, it can be used for development of hiking trails, it can be used for uh, development of pla, you know, building or acquiring and installing playgrounds. Um, I'm not sure there's a, there is, what the use would be for low, for affordable housing. That's not my concern today. My concern. I, I'm sorry, Sean, what's that?
Oh, I'm, I'm really, because I, I was just gonna make a joke, about for paying, uh, town planners.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, sorry, this fund is not for that pur, this fund is not for that purpose. So, the reason I brought this up, what, uh, yes, Tim, go ahead.
I just, I had a quick question for you, so with this Community Preservation Act, you could, um, you could have basically used, you could use it for replacing the roof without having to have any deed restrictions on it, correct?
Uh, I believe so, but I can't, but I haven't looked at it enough to say certainly, yes.
Okay, alright, but it's a possibility, okay, good enough.
Yes, that is, it, it is my, it is a very firm possibility, although we'd need somebody to go through the act to be certain that that's true. Uh, but even then, even to do the wood building, I still think that's not exactly appropriate, only because of the timing involved, because we couldn't pass it, and we couldn't pass it until town meeting, just like we couldn't pass the deed restriction until there. And then we need to start getting quarterly payments uh, from, from the tax payments. And so that's gonna, it would be at least a quarter beyond that before any money were in the fund.
Yeah, well, a, after last night's meeting, it sounds like they couldn't get the grant approved until the end of this year anyhow, and get the funds out.
Yeah, and, yeah, there, there are other things about that. I, I won't distract myself. That's okay.
I apologize.
Um, so I wanted to bring this, uh, uh, so I am bringing this as a citizen. I've already had the, the, the town administrator and I started the discussion. I have brought this to the select board. I brought this to planning, I brought it to conservation, and I've brought it to AgCom, and what, because I believe that these are the four organizations in town that must in total support this effort. If, if an organization isn't willing to support it, it says we don't have enough support in town, and it's not worth pursuing, at least that's my belief on it. At the end of the day, I said this is a select board meeting, it is the select board's decision to place something on the warrant or not, but uh, I think doing it without full support of these boards is asking for more trouble than it's worth.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, so, who, like, if, let's say you went out and bought a piece of land like the Davis Farm.
Yep.
Does the, the, who pays real estate taxes on that? Do, do those go away? Like, would the, would that fund be used to pay the real estate taxes, or, or the, or is it like a sixty-one or sixty-eight, or whatever the heck that is?
It, it would not pay for that at all, the, the taxes would, you're rightly, go away. But would also allow us to possibly convert the use of the land to some other, perhaps. Because if we were to make it open space, that would, or, or even convert it to outdoor recreation, it offers different opportunities for use of the land, even if it's, and, and different income streams, even if it's not a direct real estate tax income.
Okay.
But Peter, that would become town property, correct?
Yes, absolutely, it, yes, if the town buys it, it's owned by the town.
Now, it's a really great opportunity for a wastewater treatment plant.
I like that idea.
I wasn't gonna say that out loud, Tim, but now that you mentioned it.
I like that idea. There's Weir River that goes right through here, we can actually put it right on the Weir River. After it's been treated, we can, we can let it go right in there.
I know where there's an aqueduct.
Hey, hey, Dick, isn't there like a, uh, twenty-four inch pipe going through Rutland that we could maybe drill into and drop it?
Thirty-six inch.
Thirty-six, okay, right into Boston, baby.
Alright.
So, so the whole purpose here is, is to gauge the planning board's level of interest in support for the Community Preservation Act if we were to bring it up at town meeting this year. Granted, there are a lot of things we don't know, I don't know the percent that people would try to get. That, that, that would be on the warrant, I don't know if there would be any exemption for the first hundred thousand dollars. Different towns structure the, structure the, um, the surcharge so that the first hundred or hundred fifty thousand is completely exempt. So that low, lower, in, you know, people with lower property values who are more than likely less wealthy won't have to worry about the extra dollars to pay on income tax. I don't know the answers to any of that, because we haven't done any of the work to, to move that forward, but fundamentally from a conceptual level, is the planning board in favor or not of the Community Preservation Act?
More my opinions, yeah.
Well, why don't we just go around the room, everybody have a, have an opinion one way or another?
Okay.
So Marilyn?
I think it's very interesting, I would like to, uh, see it in writing, because I process information that way, that, uh, that does sound like there's a lot of advantages to it.
And, and also, by the way, just to in terms of seeing it in writing, yes, uh, we actually need a bylaw, and we have to form yet another committee in town. Because, because the, the, there is a committee that decides how the money is spent. It's not up to the town administrator or the select board, it's up to this committee. So, that would all come out sooner, sooner rather than later, if we're going to do this.
Yeah, I think you need a lot more work, um, in evidence to be brought in before we really know what, what, I'm all for preserving, especially historical parts, and you know, it's, land is disappearing, I'm not making any more of it, it's down in Hawaii. But, knowing I didn't put this right, we have a lot of what-ifs, you just said, so to give my official blessing, I can't do that right now. But I would like to see something like that brought forth and possibly passed personally.
Well, let's see, anyone else, Tim?
No, I'm, I'm, Peter, I'm a hundred and twenty percent behind you on this one, we need to get town land, and if this is a way to do it, I, I, I agree with Sean, we've gotta get some of the details worked out, but right now, we just have, if I'm not mistaken, the AgCom or, or something like that, we've got a little five hundred dollar fund that's basically useless, and nobody puts money into. This Preservation Act is, is a heck of a way to, uh, start acquiring money, so like, seven or eight years ago, when the state was matching one hundred percent, whatever the town would come up with to buy land, we'd had money to get in on that party. We, we didn't, so, we didn't. So, I'm behind, I'm behind you on this one, I think it's a great idea.
Dick, what do you think?
First of all, um, we had Open Space Preservation Fund until it was changed to Agricultural Preservation, or Open Space, or however you want to put it, at the last special town meeting. And there was more money that, because, uh, a private foundation did put money into it. Um, with one exception. And right now, it might tick me off because they can't find the donation. But, uh, back in two thousand, I was in Concom, and I believe it's around that area that we voted on it, and I was in favor of it at, at that time, and I still am.
Um, okay, Dick, just to give you a little more information of there's, there, there are a thousand ways to do things, and I think Rutland tries to do all of them at the same time. So, Concom has its Preservation Fund, which is for op, uh, uh, open space and recreation. And AgCom has their fund, that was the one that was renamed to be an Agricultural Preservation Fund. So it's a, it's, it's a more targeted, but there is still a, a small fund under Concom's control with, uh, I believe it's around twenty thousand dollars in it. Um, that the town was supposed to fund, but of course, we haven't had the money for a few years, so it hasn't been funded. Um, I can't tell you today what would happen to that fund with respect to a to APR. I don't know, I don't know if it if the, if those funds would be transferred into the APR fund or not. I don't know. But that's a question we would still have to answer, or if it would just stand alone in in Concom land.
Alright.
Okay, I, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea. Uh, you know, in I don't know, for as long as I've been out here, the town certainly has just, has never been able to come up with money to purchase any land. Uh, you you know, whether it be for playgrounds or a new fire station or anything else. And at least this is a way of bit by bit accumulating something. Uh, I I guess the only thing that bothers me a little bit is that if they do have to have another committee, we have any more committees in town. We're gonna get to the point where every, every citizen in the town is gonna be on some committee. Uh.
Awesome. Keep them involved.
But whether they want to be or not, right?
Yeah, right.
Right.
You're gonna have to draft people. So a- anyway, you know, I I'd support the idea definitely.
Alright, well, I thank you very much for your time. I have a good understanding of where the board is right now. When we, assuming it moves forward, then we'll come back to you with more information when we have any.
Thank you.
But as I said, the intent, the intent is to do it at this town meeting, so we don't have time to dilly-dally.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, proposed zoning changes. Accessory apartment, Rutland Plaza and special permit findings. Uh, Dave?
Uh, so in in, we we're just thinking of some zoning changes to bring forth at this town meeting. Um, maybe I'll start off with the one that affects the Plaza since please here still. Um, the idea on that one is to is to change the zoning district because right now you have this village industrial zone. You have this light industrial office zone rather, which is between the town center.
Dave, very hard to hear you, Dave. I don't, I don't know if it's a
How about that one?
That's a little better.
I was actually, I was looking at the map and trying to talk to the map. I was trying to explain to the board that right now the plaza is is light industrial um office and it's right between the town center. So the idea was to make it more uniform, to extend the town center district so it's uniform from one end to the other, while preserving uses that are currently there, which would bring in the overlay district or the business district along with the light industrial office of change to town center. Now, all this comes about because of KPs. As we, as we know, KPs has moved and they're in the um, what they're trying to do is rebuild in a different location at the plaza. Now, KPs was granted a use variance from the zoning board and there were conditions placed on that decision requiring, requiring the owner of the property to rezone the property to allow restaurant use, because currently a restaurant use is not allowed uh use. You know, tangential to all this is, I mean, it's an economic development opportunity as well because it would allow for you maybe a better utilization of the plaza if you have any vacancies or vacant space that's not currently being totally utilized. You know, this would allow for a better, more modern mix of uses. Having said that, Cleo, you wanna piggyback on any of this?
Basically, back in two thousand and six, it was always the, the plaza was always in the bi- business district and the the zoning in the town changed in two thousand and six. Um, I I didn't know that that area got changed to light industrial. I don't know how it did and how it got past me, but I even think I was on the the bylaw subcommittee at the time. I don't know what the heck happened there, but anyways, the um, you know, we wanted to just, it used to be in Rutland that it even if you were in a residential district, you could have business type zones or restaurants or things like that. That all changed and they changed the zoning for the the Rutland Plaza where there were, there's a, there's a pizza place, as you know, there's a, you know, there's a donut shop and a honeydew there. Uh, there used to be a Taco Bell there and then all of a sudden now you can't build, you can't have a restaurant. You could, we couldn't have a restaurant in there without getting a a the, you know, use change at the ZBA. So what we're just trying to do is actually just bring it back to the zoning that would allow it. Like, so if we, if we do, if we make it town center and and business, then it takes, it takes care of all of the zoning issues. And I mean, basically, it's being used for that anyway. It's just, for some reason, it got changed and I I didn't even know it got changed. I I had done, you know, work, was working on a lease with KPs and I couldn't even uh you know, fulfill it until I got that zoning change, which, the use change, which it didn't come easy. Dave can, can uh, you know, support me on that. It was a, the zoning board had trouble with it. So I I just wanna get the zone. Huh? I'm sorry?
Cleo, I was gonna say, w- when we did the TC zones, the light industry was already there. We, we opted to keep it and put the TC zones around it. So that light industry, Dick, you could maybe back me up because that light industry came from Sims, if I'm not mistaken. That's the history I remember.
Correct.
It it changed the zone.
Changed and we left it alone.
On the whole, no, on the whole thing, it changed it. Well, the Rutland Plaza itself, the original Rutland Plaza, it was, it it wasn't light industrial before, it was business. And I, we left it out of, when when we did, I was on the the bylaw subcommittee when we changed the zoning to the town center districts and we picked the areas. We left that alone because it was business. We, I thought it was business at the time, but um, we should have, we should have just encompassed that in the T, in the, in the TC district at the time. Why not? It's all, it's all around it. I mean, I I couldn't put a pot store in there, but I can put one accor- right directly across the street. You know, i- it's not, it it's just, it's there's, it's a bad, right now, the zoning, I think, is out of place there. It needs to change to the business and and the, in the town center.
Yeah.
Hey, this is.
Trouble, Cleo.
I was.
I'm sorry, Marilyn, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I was also involved in that and my recollection is that we had split that, that it was going to be the light industry to accommodate or not accommodate, but to, because of uh the uh Sims company there and that the rest of it was going to be TC D two. I don't remember that we made that whole thing light industrial.
Yeah, it is.
I'm not dis- you know, not disputing in that it's definitely now, but I don't believe it was the intent of the committee at that time.
Oh, yeah, the lumber company also there, so.
Yeah, the.
That's that's the time it fell in place, but now it should be changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the TC zones don't allow like a lumberyard. So what are they gonna do about the facility there? Because that's a lumberyard in the back. That's not in the TC.
I'm s- I would thought you.
What's that?
Everything's grandfathered, it's, it's in existing use now. But um, you know, if if the, if we close that and then tried to reopen a lumberyard, you probably couldn't. But it's, it would, we wanted to do business as well as the TC district, because it's, it's really both. I just wanna incorporate the T, the Town Center District in there as well as the um Business District.
So just wanted to just, I just get clarification on this. I did request that uh Cleo provide a proposed zoning map to show what it would look like as TC and business. So I suppose that map is is forthcoming?
Yes, it is. I'm working on it with George, yeah.
Alright, great. Um.
Yeah, cuz the only thing I've got questions on is that property goes farther back than our TC zone. So what would we do then? Because see, the light industry goes, goes deeper than the TC zones. So if if we just change that to TC, there'd be sections of that area that wouldn't be in the TC zone and would be I mean, I don't know what it would be. It would be in a limbo, so to speak.
To to both, you see where that black line goes through the back of it? We're gonna stop there.
Yeah.
And then the rest, I think, beyond that, I think goes to residential. But um, and we'll, and we'll show that on the new zoning map, but we're looking for a TC district as well as business, Tim, so that would encompass all of it.
And you, would you just clarify? TC?
I would put a business district on top of the TC, yeah.
As an overlay.
As, yeah.
Uh, that's not, yeah, that, and then we, oh, boy. Not that I don't disagree with it. I I I, I just, I'm, I'm struggling because that whole area was supposed to be TC. And and I have no problem going back to that because that's where it is, but that's gonna change the the bylaw for the Town Center District then, uh, you know.
No, it won't.
Not saying we have to, I'm just saying that it it's gonna be tricky, right?
No, it's just for that parcel. It's, it has nothing to do with the everything else in the town. It only refers to this parcel. I just don't wanna leave the town center because that has a lot of good things for business and, you know, it's, it's, that's a really nice piece of zoning. So I I, and it should, I mean, why not? It, it, any, anyplace else in town center, we have the same uses there that you would in the Town Center District, but there's also business uses that are in there that, so you need to encompass both. That, that's where I'm at, that's all.
Do we have a business, do we have a business zone anymore? Because I thought we?
Yes, yeah. Um, you don't see it too many, you don't see it too many parts of town, but it does exist. Um.
Okay.
I mean, most of what happened, I guess, when the rezoning was done, the idea is you go with TC and then Village Center, which is the predominant zoning district, except for light industrial office elsewhere, like out there on sixty-eight and uh up north towards Hubbardstead. But there is a business district, um.
Yeah, that.
What that allows is any use permitted in the residential district, seals, showroom, showrooms, uh automobile lots, radio and television stations, banks, office buildings, cleaners, drive-in theaters, hotels, motels. Uh, it's, it's a fair, it's a fair representation of things. Um, you know, I I would maybe leave it to the board to take a look at the uses in the business and compare those to the TC, to see if there's overlap or no overlap and you know, it it takes some kind of assessment of it.
Let me ask the board something. Would it make better sense instead of trying to overlap a TC district in a business, which now you've got two different zoning requirements on top of each other, which never makes me comfortable, to just turn the light industry and office space into a business district? Just call that whole section business? Because that's what it is basically, correct?
Well, there's certain, there's certain things that, that my question, my question on that, Tim, is there's certain things that the Town Center District zoning allows that even business doesn't allow. So it 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 really, it really is, it really does show what, you know, the Town Center District is in that area. But there's some businesses in there that, you know, that would, that are a little bit, that are already established that I'd like to see. You know, that's why i- i- nothing's gonna, I mean, what, what, how much is gonna change in there except for what, what goes in there? In other words, like, I couldn't put the pot store in there because it wasn't town center. The only thing you can put, a pot store is in the, is in, is in the Town Center District. But you can't do that in, e- even in business. But that, that's why I say that should be a Town Center District as well. I, I, that's why I wanted it to be both.
Yeah, and and I'm, and this is more norm, I I'm struggling and maybe, Dave, having two districts on top of each other, I don't think we have that anywhere in town, do we?
No, it's alright, there are no. The town does not have any overlay zoning districts. We have a base zoning district and overlay on top of that. That's correct.
That's, that's clearly the only thing I don't wanna do is because then you've got two, two definitions on the same piece of property and that, that leads to, to me the headaches in my mind.
Not really a definition. It's a, it's two different, it's just more, more is allowed on that property than would normally be allowed if it was just town center or just business. So there's more allowed uses. That's, that's what, you know, that that already really exists there anyway. That's why, that's why, you know, George and I had a long discussion about this and we didn't know how to apply and that's how, well, this would make the most sense because it's, it should be town center too. It's all around it. Why not make it? Use it, you know what I mean?
Oh, I I get what you, I get what you and George are going for, Cleo. I just, me personally, and I'm not speaking for the rest of the board, it's just me, I'm struggling with two zoning districts on the same piece of property. I I just, we don't do it anywhere else. It'd be a precedent in town and I'm just, I'm not one for precedents.
It just allows more uses and and each one of these is individual and it's the pieces of property are individuals. If you look at that piece of property and what it's being used for now, it it just, the, the, all it really is is going back to what it was before, business, and then putting the town center, which, which has probably more use allowances than, you know, um, just business. There's other things that are allowed in the Town Center District that aren't allowed in the Business District. That's all, that's the only reason I thought it would make sense to have both in there because uh, I mean, we went for, for use variants for the uh, to put a pot store in there and they turned us down. Because it only can be put in Town Center District. I can put it all around it, but I can't put it in it. But it should have been, I mean, why wouldn't, why wouldn't the Town Center District have run right through there anyway? Because it was zone business and at the time and we didn't think it was necessary, but we come, when, when you guys put in that part by law, it made it necessary to, to have it be both. That's why I made it both.
So I guess without going too far into the bylaw itself and how, the bylaw change and how it would work, I think what I'm looking for from the board is guidance on whether the board would be willing to sponsor this using staff to assist in this bylaw change or whether or not you prefer it to be a citizen's petition. I mean, I I will say that staff is somewhat involved because of the use variance issue. You know, I think we have a different position in terms of what, whether use variants are allowed. I do realize it's KPs. It's, you know, it's a local favorite and we wanna keep them, uh, we wanna keep KPs in town. I I totally understand that. And that, at the end of the day, they're gonna be able to expand into a larger space and have more of a presence at that location. All these are good things. They support economic development. To the extent that, you know, this first major property as you enter town coming north is occupied with uses that fully, fully take advantage of the location is an economic development goal as well. So I think there's larger planning goals here besides just, you know, one particular landowner. I think it would tie together opportunities in the TC, especially what's across the street and what's coming across, what's on the same side of the street up, up a ways and what's coming across the street as well. So I'm just looking to get some guidance from the board and how you wanna proceed with this, if at all.
Yeah, I do. I'd like to have the bylaws, both of them. Take them out. Send it out to us and uh, Norm might think it's something that we should uh have a little discussion about.
Okay, haven't, haven't heard any comments on uh, as Dave said, do we want to be actively involved in this or do we want to let it happen by citizen's position?
I feel that we should be involved.
I agree. It's a zoning matter. It should be the planning board is, is, and and we should use our resources to handle that. It's my opinion.
Yeah.
You have a point, you gotta help everybody. That too. Someone else was supposed to bring bring, bring something to the board to ask for help. I mean, I think we should. That's part of the plan, that's part of the, the planning board's purpose, I believe, is to not only make decisions, but to give guidance.
Is this something that we're trying to propose for the upcoming town meeting?
Yes.
I would say so. I, I don't know how intense or how much time we can put into it, but what are they anticipating the closing of the warrant?
Uh, we don't have that scheduled yet, but I believe the typical time is April, first week of April or so.
Alright, so we, we have roughly one, one month to do it.
Wow.
Well, I I think in this case, we're not rewriting, we're not, we're not writing a new zoning bylaw that has various sections. I think what's happening. I think what's happening here is, it's a decision on whether or not. To opt to proceed with rezoning the sites as described to town center with an overlay. Of business. Uh, do nothing, do it all business or do it all town center.
Hello?
Hi.
Okay, everybody froze for a second.
It's on your end, Sean, not on that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I realize that.
Norm, should we have a, uh, should we set up a public hearing to, uh, discuss this? It, it's gonna be a bylaw change?
It's not gonna be a bylaw change, it's gonna be a zoning map change.
Right, zoning map change, yeah.
Well, I, I'm confused, cause if we, if we overlay TC to it. It won't go to the back of that property, so. How does that work?
Cle didn't want it to go to the back of the property.
Then there's gonna, business is closing.
No, no, that, that little piece back there is, is, is just woods.
No, no, I'm saying, but I, I, I'm okay with your line, but TC two isn't as deep as this property.
So the only thing we'd be able to put in a TC two district would be where the TC two line ends. You know, that was part of the, the idea with the TC two and the TC one, we wanted to maintain the character of Main Street. While we did that.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's why we only made it that deep.
That, what do you rezone the back property to?
It's all business, alrighty, it's, it's not, it's just, the only reason for the TC district, Tim, is so that. There's more uses allowed with the TC district and the business district than there is both, than there is with just one. So why not let the, the TC two district is all around it, why not run it through the middle of it? Someday you might need it and I don't have to go back for a use variance to, to do it, you know what I mean, let's get the zoning changed once. Where, it, it, where it makes sense and only do it once.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, use variances are not a good planning practice. If there's an expression that certain uses are valuable in the community, then those uses ought to be allowed through. Either special permit at the most or by right at the least, right, and, you know, special permit or by right in particular zoning districts. Um, and I think restaurants are excellent uses for that location, uh, in particular, so.
Yeah.
You know, I think, once again, there's economic development goals that could be served here as well, given the lack of commercial space that exists in town, we wanna. Try to make the most of what's currently there, especially given the history of the site, which is different than adjacent sites. Well, this, this site has a history of business uses to begin with, and this protects those uses.
Should we then in the next meeting, ha, you know, have, basically have both the bylaw, or both of the, uh. Zoning bylaws.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely wanna keep these on the agenda going forward, figure out if you wanna do a bylaw subcommittee. You gotta work it out during the planning board meetings itself.
My, my opinion, Norm, is, in, is that based on the time. Requirements, I, I'd probably wanna try to get this done in our, uh, in our planning board meetings. Even if it takes an hour out of our meeting to get this done, so we get it on the warrant.
Yeah, the, the thing is, you know, I don't see this as being extremely complicated. Uh, it would simply be, you know, a, a, a warrant article. To include into the TC two and business zone district. A description of those two parcels of land.
Yeah, that's it, yep.
I agree with everybody, but after the, uh, the, the, uh, the fire show that happened with that last bylaw. I just wanna make sure we got our i's dotted and t's crossed.
What, what last bylaw?
The last, you know, ones with the, uh, the sides. Were, were a select group brought in, a bunch of, uh, their people when we were trying to do the, uh, the lot bylaws. You know, for sizing a lot. I don't wanna go through that again, that's why I make sure we got everything done. Trust me, I'm not digging on anybody, I just wanna make sure that we, that we've thought about every possibility that could, or at best is possible. That could come up in the town meeting, cause we all know that. Somebody's gonna get up and, and be opposed or speak on this and just wanna make sure we got all of our ducks in a row, that's all I'm asking.
I agree with Norm though, that I don't think this is gonna be so complicated and it, it certainly is. Excuse me, it justified by changing a bylaw to. Changing a bylaw to reflect the usage. That's the, has evolved for those, that property. You know, obviously flesh that out, but, uh. I ju, I know, I'm just saying, I agree with Norm that it's not gonna be terribly complicated as long as, I mean, it sounds like we pretty much agree. Nick, have you talked about it?
I know, I like, I like the idea of, uh, combining. It, it, we should have done it in the beginning, I, I agree, it's something that, at the time. Well, logical, but now it, it doesn't.
Right, times are changing.
That's correct.
So it sounds to me like there's consensus that the planning board will sponsor this?
Yes.
That we'll put it on the next agenda, we'll keep moving on this and we'll be getting from Cle the proposed map.
Yep.
And any, any, and any assistance from you to make this, to make this happen?
You got it, yep, absolutely.
Norm, should we, should we through Dave, ha, make the sele, the town administrator and select board aware that we're working on this? So they get a heads up?
Well, town administrator, if nothing else, just for the fact that obviously we're gonna want an article on, uh, the town meeting warrant.
Yeah. Hey, if, if I, if I may, I'm in, uh, before you there, Tim, uh. You mentioned a citizen petition, uh, Cle, I think though, uh, if, if a citizen doesn't petition. I don't know if it'll make any difference, uh, if you get enough signatures, it has to be on a warrant, like no one, no one can deny it, it has to go. I wanna look at your options, Cle, I mean, I don't think there, anybody would try to block you to get in there, uh, but. If it comes up as from a. A board or a committee, it goes before the select board for approval, right?
Yes.
I think so, yeah. So or not, you know, but if you do have a citizen petition. Um, it has to be put on a warrant and then you could have, you know, backup at, at there, but.
Well, I think if it was a citizen petition, there would not be as much staff support on this. Promoting it in the same way as an economic development tool. I, to correct some of the past issues at the site, so that's also something maybe to consider. I only wanted to know how the board wanted to go about this and get some kind of a sense and some kind of direction. You know, and how staff should handle this.
Norm, the only reason I said I wanted, uh, I guess I wanted the select board and Ron to know about it. Is to understand Dave's gonna be putting some time into this and some of his time is gonna be allocated to this. So that's the only reason I was thinking that.
If I may get some chat, uh, exactly, Tim, but if the board. Gives its support to the citizen writing the bylaw, we really, we really don't have to do any work. I'm just saying, make you do all the work, Cle, but if you had it all done. Couldn't we still give our support, but not have to use town resources to, to do it and then. Now I'm not saying. You know, what decisions have to be made, just trying to do the eas, what could be easier and exponential.
So, can I comment on that as far as, I'm gonna do all the work and the only thing would be really important is. That you guys support it, that's all, I mean, if, if the town meeting, if the planning board says we, we, we recommend favorably on this. It goes along. That's, I mean, as far as I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the, I'm gonna do the zoning map, you know, what we're gonna do, all the things really that. That need to be done, the only thing that I guess we're looking for from the planning board is that they support it, that's all.
That sounds good.
And also to add to that, I think what's gonna happen on the staff end is that we're gonna be charged with making a presentation. To the select board and the FinCom, which if the board takes the lead on this, working with you to do a lot of the heavy lift. We would then be in a position to do the presentation and describe, you know, why the planning board is interested in this. You know, to take the lead on the presentation aspect and promote it.
Yeah, it, it, it's real simple for me, Norm, restaurant e equals tax revenue.
Yep.
Well, yeah.
And no kids in school.
Thanks, Cle, you got me on that one.
Alright, so maybe going to the next one. Um, special permit findings, so right now, there's twenty-three findings for a special permit. What I'd like to do is straight that twenty-three down to seven. Seven very flexible, functional special permit findings, in fact. That would eliminate the amount of work on paperwork for special permits. Uh, I have seen this done elsewhere, it is a professional practice, have as few special permanent findings as possible. This would streamline, I would take out several pages of the zoning bylaw and would, would streamline the special permit application.
So, I guess you're all done with me then?
Yes, we'll, we'll be in touch.
I have a question for Cle though.
Oh, go ahead.
It says here accessory apartment in Rutland Plaza. You know, what's the accessory apartment about?
It's three things, there are three proposed zoning changes, one is the plaza. And the third is accessory apartment, I wanted to get to that one last.
Okay, I gotcha, thank you.
Okay, thank you, goodnight, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you for everything.
So all the findings, basically, it, it's not adding to the bylaw or subtracting from it, it's, it's a bunch of lines and a bunch of strike throughs. So I guess I'm looking for guidance from the board on how you wanna proceed with that one, if you're in favor of that, wanna have staff pursue that or not?
I'd like to take a look and, and see how you come up with it, yeah, just try it.
Yeah, definitely present something.
Yeah, I, I have no problem. Well, once again, I'm just looking at. All of this stuff and. Special permit findings, that is going to be a zoning bylaw change, right?
Yes.
Which again requires public hearing and town meeting, uh, are you talking about that for this town meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I think I can have a draft ready for the next meeting to keep this on the agenda as well, just work through these during work sessions on the planning board meetings.
Okay.
Was there consensus to pursue this?
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Alright, good, good, thank you. And then the, uh, last one is, is not one that I was promoting per se or working with. Someone else to promote specifically. Uh, accessory apartment, this has come up in conversations with the building commissioner. Uh, he indicates, and I don't really know this to be the case one way or the other, we haven't had a survey of the community. Or more of a formal process to identify the need for accessory apartments. I do know that under Baker's recent zoning changes is a priority put on accessory apartments. That this housing issues in the Commonwealth in terms of price and having. Housing options, so there, there is a need. But it hasn't been demonstrated in this town, we haven't gone to the formal level. Anyways, from his experience or his, his questions he's starting to get, people are interested in doing an in-law apartment. Which is an accessory apartment, is a separate dwelling unit that stands on its own. Whether it's attached to the existing dwelling or a detached structure. Um, now currently the zoning bylaw doesn't have an accessory apartment bylaw. So, there's not a permissible situation unless someone can do with two dwellings. Which involves having multiples of the underlying area requirement, accessory apartment wouldn't require additional land area, so we don't have. That type of bylaw. What is concerned is that he's gonna be getting a lot more questions about accessory apartments in the future. So, so we, we figured we would look into it and especially if the board remembers. We have the Housing Choice Act of twenty twenty, which makes it easier to pass. Bylaws that, uh, pertains, that pertain to accessory apartments, so, you know, as part of the housing push. It's probably a need and I just wanted to see what the board thought of it at this point, but as I mentioned, I wasn't looking to bring this to this town meeting. Um, but I was requested to, so here it is.
We, Norm, this is my opinion, wi, with this being the end of February and we got March and April. I, I don't mind discussing that, but not until next, and it, special town meeting or next year, we got too much on our plate right now.
Uh, that, that's my sentiments exactly, that, you know, find and take a look at it. And, uh, you know, probably not a bad idea to even, even do it, but not for this coming town meeting. That, this is one that we, we need to look at very, very carefully.
Okay, carefully maybe, but I'm telling Boston to get their freaking nose out of our business.
Yeah, I mean, I would tend to agree, I mean, you know, there are model bylaws for certain. And there are a lot of municipalities who have accessory apartment bylaws, it's very common, but I think the board would probably. Dig in on this one and go line by line to, to tailor the model bylaws for the town's particular use. That, that's a, that's a, that's a, a heavy of enough lift. So, I'll pass that on, that there is interest. And that we want to set the, set this one up for next year.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that zoning changes, uh, central mass planning commission quarterly meeting?
Yeah, this item is just for informational purpose only, as you'll see, there's an, uh, meeting coming up, quarterly commission meeting. Uh, this is to make the delegates aware, Dick and Sean, as well as any other planning board member who might be interested. That their next meeting is March eleventh.
I, I am planning on being, uh, attending that. The last one was very good, so I'm hoping this one will be just as good.
Yeah, if you see here, this is the fourth in, in a series of meetings on this topic.
Yeah.
And also the town, um, earns LPA hours, but, you know, by attending, so.
Yeah. Okay, thirteen one-stop grant program.
So, this is informational also, so. There's an initiative that was passed by the various secretariats of the Commonwealth. That work in housing and urban development and renewal, what they've done is taken several grant programs, ten of them. That were previously disconnected and what they've done is merged those programs. Not merged the grant programs themselves, but merged the review and the grants. Opportunities follows into one. One can, one, one cohesive way, what that means is, instead of having to apply to ten. Different entities for grants, which may pertain to one project, one can apply with a master application for several grant types. And they can be reviewed on an expedited basis and, and, uh, reviewed and also we have. Uh, feedback given back to the municipality for the projects that they propose. So basically, it's one application and you identify what it is you're interested in pursuing, then this question's appertained to it. So, not every, not all projects would need all of these. Grant programs, but some might need two or three, so instead of having to go here, to here, to here. You can do it on one application and you just pick up what programs you're interested in. The benefit of this is that you get feedback upfront, without having to go too far into the process. Um, you can get some advice on what, you know, what, whether the project is ready or past muster or. Or, you know, ideas to help, to, to mold it. Now, we've attended, I've attended a couple of, um, the remote seminars. What they're really looking for here are projects that. What they're really looking for here are projects that are ready to go. You know, they'll provide grant money for planning projects, but what they're really trying to do are to get projects that are actual real projects into the pipeline faster than otherwise. I mean, talking to Ron, we're not sure that we have a lot of projects like that. You know, for example, say you had a town-owned property that was derelict in a commercial district. Get renewal of that kind of a project, several of these grants would apply. And if we had some developer who the town could work with, then we can show it, we can demonstrate that this project is viable and could be turned around quickly to take the building from being vacant to being utilized for commercial enterprise. So that's really one of the types of projects that this is looking for. Um, so I'll leave it at that, and if the board has any questions or comments, maybe we can try to answer those.
So, you, you're saying it has to be, uh, for business? It can't be for park? Or something like that?
It's possible that it could be for parks, if we could identify that we have a park project that is beyond just a planning stage, which could be realized on a timely basis through, you know, through one of these grant programs. So it could apply to that, especially if the town controls the property. The answer is yes. I think the idea is to identify possible projects.
Uh, seeing as I've been reading, uh, old minutes from the Concom and the Rutland State Sanatorium, that brown fields comes up. You know, for cleaning that place up, in my opinion, and make it into a recreational open space, so people can walk trails up there or have fitnicks or whatever. But I, I personally would like to see it cleaned up. And why I mentioned Concom in the minutes, because way back, it was asked for, please father, back in the two thousand, to fix it, and never did. So, that to me is worth a grant.
I think that's a great idea. I've actually been in that property up there, and it is very nice and certainly underutilized. But to go back to this, uh, committee, one-stop for growth, I think it's a great idea to just be able to apply once and then, you know, have your proposal looked at automatically by all the rest of these groups. Saves a lot of time in just applications. And maybe you, you might not even think of applying such to one of these, and they might want to give you the money.
Good point.
We really don't have to do this right now, anything on this right now, do we, Dave?
Uh, no, um, this is really for informational, just to let the board know that the Commonwealth has made a, you know, a large push to get this, to get the word out. They had a series of, of remote public forums. Um, so since we became aware of it, we just wanted to pass it along, in case anybody had any thoughts for projects that might be suitable or any further discussion.
Well, let's continue with it.
Yep, keep that in mind.
Okay, anything more on that one?
Alright, great.
Okay, item fourteen, Barry Paxton Road, food truck use.
So, um, scheduled on the next meeting on the ninth is a hearing to allow a food truck at two seventeen Barry Paxton Road. The site is located in the Village Center zoning district. Uh, this is the introduction to the concept. I believe the bylaw calls for an introduction of a site plan that is in the Village Center's district. So I did ask the applicant if he would be interested in attending. He's aware of this. I'm not sure if he's available at this point. But if he's not, I mean, I provided the board his cover letter, and also a plan of land showing the location of the food truck. Um, it should be noted that mobile food uses are not an explicitly allowable use in any district in town. Um, however, in trying to look at the bylaw in a favorable light to food uses, we do see that in Village Center. There's takeout that's allowed, fast food's allowed, restaurants are allowed. So I think we, we determined that this is a tie-in, even, even though it's not explicitly listed. In this case here, the truck would be parked on-site probably sixty to seventy percent of the time. So the, the truck itself is really an extension of the existing structure. Uh, the existing structure will also be used to store equipment and things related to the use of the truck. So there's kind of an extension of the structure itself, which brings it into the full of site plan review by the planning board.
Okay, uh, who owns the property?
Uh, let me see if I can get that off the.
Ken, Ken Lebel owns the property.
Um, was it ever taken care of? I know they, they went in there for a twenty-one E, I believe, and it was, I don't think it ever finished being taken care of.
I don't understand.
Used to be a gas station there. In other words, there was oil all over the, in, in the ground, saturated. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't know if it was ever taken care of.
Okay, I have no idea.
I think before you move too far, you better check it.
Well, that's being leased, correct? It's not being purchased.
Correct.
Actually, if you could just identify yourself for the record, so the board knows.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My name is Mark Bryan.
And you were involved in this, how are you involved in this project?
Uh, my wife and I are owners of the, uh, food trailer.
Okay. Now, is this a, an existing business? Do you use this food trailer now?
No, this is a brand-new business we're starting.
Okay. Uh, personally, I mean, I'm interested in it, uh, and I'm, this is Marilyn, and it, for Mark's benefit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, did have a few questions just on, you know, what, what is exactly what's that, but, uh, I, I don't think we need to get into that now.
Okay.
And it seems like more you're, you're just presenting the idea and seeing if, if we think it could be a go.
Correct.
Well, I would say, Marilyn, even more specifically, this is scheduled for the ninth of March, site plan review hearing. This is the introduction of the, of the project, as per the bylaw, which requires that the project be introduced.
That was one of my questions, actually. Is this, would this require any bylaw changes?
It would not require a bylaw change. I think, working with the building commissioner, we interpreted that site plan review in the Village Center district would be appropriate. Given that this is similar enough to food uses that are currently allowed in that zoning district.
Right. I think that, um, Dave, somebody brought up the gasoline, just to, addressing Mark, that that's a good idea to make sure that that property is.
That, that would be the first thing on my agenda tomorrow.
Right.
I understand, well, from what I've understood, though, there was a, a problem with the water because of maybe a leak from the mobile station across the way a few years ago. But we bring in our, we bring in our own water, so we don't use the water on the site.
Uh-huh. That, that had nothing to do with it. This, this is because of all the car maintenance that was done over the years.
Okay.
So just, you just gotta make sure that you've got a, in my opinion, I'm not sure if it falls under the board of health or not, but just make sure it's something that you're not gonna get stuck with.
Okay.
So you're renting the property, right?
That's correct.
And it looks like you have a service window in the building, eventually?
Not in the building, no. I mean, all I can use the building for is, um, just to store, just for storage. I can't use the building to to make, to prepare or anything like that.
Okay.
So the service windows are on the, um, the trailer alone?
Yeah. I would be, uh, interested in hearing the, the rest of your proposal.
Okay.
But I don't, that doesn't mean the rest of the, I'm not speaking for the rest of the board.
I, I like the idea. I just want, I just want to make sure it's, uh, gonna be safe.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, hi, Mark. I'm Peter Crane. I'm chair of Conservation Commission.
Hi, Peter.
Just so you know, and I'm gonna say words that are gonna sound very scary to you, I think.
Okay.
There is a stream, and there's a bunch of wetlands nearby on that property. Conservation Commission has a permitting process to manage projects that are within a hundred feet of wetlands and other amounts for streams. So, I'm just alerting you that there may be other regulatory filings required to set up the business. I, I'm not trying to scare you off at all. I'm just trying to make you aware that there might be something more than just the zoning issue that you need to deal with. I, I, I don't know enough about the project. I don't want to say you do have a problem. I don't want to say you don't have a problem.
Alright.
Where would you go to get the answers for that, Peter?
Uh, we need to see a, a more discreet site plan to be able to.
We need to go to your, the whole conservation committee?
Yeah, I mean, we, we could deal with it from an informational basis. We've done, we've done this in many times in the past where we've, where the, an applicant shows up, says, here's the project, here's the information you need, and then we'll say, here's the filing that you need to do to best service this.
Right.
Alright.
And sometimes it's a, it's just a paperwork filing, and depending upon the DEP's interpretation of the rules, sometimes there's more. It's all, I'm not trying to scare you off, because I'm not trying to say it's not doable. I don't see anything here that says you're going to destroy the wetlands, and I don't believe you are from, from where you are. It's just that there are filings that need to be made in order for the town to protect itself.
Okay, yeah, because the trailer is self-contained. Anything that, any, any wastewater, anything is, is held and is removed from the site. And it's, it's like with the water coming in, it comes, it comes in from offsite and it'll go offsite at the end of the day. So there's no drainage anywhere on the property.
Yeah, but it's also any movement of, of earth and materials, it's, it's unfortunately a little more complicated than that.
I understand, but everything's in place.
I don't want to, I don't, don't want to take up planning board for this.
Right, but everything's in place. We're not moving any earth. We're not moving, we're not making any changes to the landscape whatsoever, except beautification in the spring. But, okay, I will look into it.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, I don't have any problem with the idea. Uh, it, uh, yeah, it, it, it just, i- i- it doesn't sound like it's going to be something that's going to have any major impact. Uh, certainly not any major harmful impact anywhere. Uh, so.
No, it's gonna be on wheels.
It's on wheels, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh.
Well, we look forward to getting more information.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much.
Okay. Okay, believe it or not, last item, Rutland Heights.
Yeah, so this item's on the agenda because, as the board knows, there's a proposal for eighty-eight dwelling units at the Heights property. The applicant has submitted to the RDIC and the HPDD board a concept plan application. The bylaw for the HPDD zoning district requires that such filings be distributed to several boards and commissions, including the planning board. So, this is presented to the board to see if the board has any questions or comments on this. The matter will be taken tomorrow night. A hearing for the concept plan will be tomorrow night before the HPDD review board. But we're circulating this as informational at least, and to gather any comments that the board may have.
Uh, if I may, food shop, I'd first speak. Uh, had, we haven't been, planning board hasn't been approached about, from Harbor Classics Homes, the the applicant who's trying that. I mean, they haven't come before us yet, have they?
They don't have to.
They don't have to. Yeah, they don't have to, but.
Yeah, that, and they won't.
Dave's correct. All the only thing they have to do is, is, uh, distribute the plans for comment.
Yeah.
You, you want, how many thousand comments?
So, wait, so, Dave, if I may, again, I'm sorry, if I may, food chair, Norm, uh.
Yeah.
Are you asking us to review the applicant's application, or, because it, it goes all through the specialist, I mean, the, uh, online, right? I mean, it'll come before us, but, because exactly what are you asking us again?
Right, so, no, we're not asking, this is not a site plan, this is not as if it's a site plan hearing for the planning board, where the planning board is the permanent authority and would grant a site plan a, a, a site plan decision. This is being circulated to the board, because the Heights bylaw requires that concept plans be distributed by the select board, fire, police, planning board, conservation, et cetera. Uh, and that the planning board is given the opportunity, we would like to comment on the proposal and provide these comments to the HPDD review board for its hearing tomorrow night.
And, and Dave, here's my, if this follows the procedures that we have, which is, you know, like a developed male, a concept plan, and then a final plan, when I look this over, I'm like, there's, and Dick's probably gonna tell me that, there's like no detail.
Which is not untypical for a concept plan. The concept plan is to show in the big picture what is being proposed and to have a general conversation. Not more than, it's more than general, I mean, there's a topography map. They show me some files for the land that would be under this development. They show the number of units. But this is to introduce it to the HPDD board first, and then once the HPDD board buys into the concept, then further expenses would be had on the engineering side, once the applicant gets some sense of, of whether the HPDD board has any reservations about what they're seeing, or has questions about what they're seeing. You know, if, if it's, if this is a total non-starter, the process, it would maybe modify the concept plan and come back, or it has. If it's not, if it's a starter, and the questions are general in terms of site plan, you know, for example, how are we growing this? Um, is this your final, uh, final presentation for the number of units? What do you anticipate for open space? What type of road do you anticipate? It, it encourages general questions before they spend a lot of money on engineering. The money we spend on engineering, once they get the concept plan approval, that tells the developer that, that the community sees value in the project, and that's worth pursuing.
Yeah, my comments was, is that, you know, I, I looked this over, and from a, and, and not using this derogatory, but from a cartoon perspective and a lot count, yeah, this is good, but it doesn't give any details of what's their concept for water, sewer, electric? I mean, if that's all in the detail phase, I get that then, okay? But I, I would have expected in the concept phase that you have some idea on what they're planning to do for utility.
While it's not shown on the plans, I do believe that they will be prepared to speak to that. They showed the HPDD board review this favorably. I think they can speak to it in, 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 in general terms tomorrow night. I mean, so where you guys, how you gonna get water onto the site? They should have already answered to that. Then, once they get the general approval, there's, there's responsibility to show it on the plan, and that's where a lot of the more engineering costs would, would, would happen.
Okay, good, good, that's fine.
Can you rotate down to the, uh, to the other, uh, map you had? Yeah, that one there. I just want to let you people know, being on the planning board and doing subdivisions and things like that, what stands out in this is only one access up near Central Tree School to all this project here. And to me, for kind of loud, I'm, tomorrow night, I'm gonna ask them by Mozio's to, you know, how come those buildings are there and can't be moved up to the heights, up to the top? And then come in on the bottom with a road to tie in to make a second access out. Because having only one with that many houses is not good.
Well, Dick, that, that was my, I was doing my, my math on those twenty-four foot access roads, and they exceed a thousand feet.
Yeah, and not only that, is the way it's pitched down, I mean, it's gonna be sewer lines running all over the place anyways. So you might as well have the road extend around the bottom one there, at the Y, and come around, yeah, that one.
Well, I think what they're afraid of is that protection zone, because they're gonna have to go through the deep, right now with what they've got designed, they've only got one little potential problem coming in off of the main road into that Mozio section. Other than that, they don't touch any of the protection zones, so they don't have to worry about the DEP or anything.
Well, to me, for kind of.
That's not quite correct, Tim.
It isn't?
No.
Well, I see lines here that say four hundred.
They don't have all the lines that they need. I'll be talking about that tomorrow.
Okay, thanks Pete, because that's what.
And the reality is, it impacts, probably impacts only the road.
Yeah.
That second wetland section to the north of Rutland Heights Way is, may also be troublesome, but I'd have to look at more depth, but I'm that'll be my concern tomorrow.
Alright, because that's, Peter, that, that was my, my problem, is I was looking at all, what they've got on this concept plan, I'm going like, oh, I see what they're doing, but I didn't know they were missing other sectional lines, because that would make a whole lot of difference then, yeah, okay.
Just wanted to jump in real quick, a question to Peter, so was this reviewed at the Conservation Commission meeting?
We very briefly looked at it, yep, and that was, that was the source of the missing hundred-foot line.
Were there any questions generated as a result of that quick look that were circulated to the applicant so that they have this information?
No, there were, no, nothing's been circulated. It was, it was just, the comment is going to be, when it comes time to, to get real plans, be on concept, put the hundred-foot line on, and more than likely, they're going to have to interact with, with CONCON and DEP and DCR for the water sewer lines, go running along the street. It's, it's, it's nothing obstructive, I don't think, although I have to do a little bit of zoning analysis on it as well.
Alright, thanks.
Yep.
So, that, that's, it's gonna be a pretty hefty meeting, let's put it that way.
What was the information on that meeting? Where, where and what time?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be, it's a remote meeting. It starts at six. The agenda has been posted on the town website. It's the HPDD review board meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay.
Alright.
Are we done? Is there anything else?
We need to give Norm any advice about, you know, the town having a thousand-foot dead-end requirement? Do we need to get that comment to him? Because that.
I'm on the board, so I'll be there tomorrow night.
Oh, me too, Dick. I just, I didn't know if we officially wanted to send him anything, so we showed that we reviewed it and trying to give them some help. I don't know, I just, I.
Well, not, not only that, they didn't give a right-of-way up at the very top for the solar people to get into their project.
Yeah, which won't happen, but that's another story.
Never say never.
Oh, I'm, I'm positive the way the grid's, they put the brakes on everything now. EverSource is doing the same thing, so anyhow, you're right. Be positive.
Related to that, if I may, does this change anything about the solar project? As, as it has been proposed and has been being worked on?
Negative. Well, right at the moment, just the, up above, to get into it, on that side, there is a right-of-way that we were allowing the solar people to come in on, along the school line bound.
That disappears.
No, but I remember, I remember in the original plan, they had modified the fence. And therefore, they had changed the layout of the field, of the solar field.
Now, after going back, we had decided that it's only gonna be, we're gonna keep the, there will not be a, an extra fence line going around on the trail. Because it's gonna feel like you're walking between two barbed wires. So the RDC said, let's, we're gonna just keep everybody off the trail there. There will not be a trail.
Well, now, Dick, it looks like it's gonna be an access road.
Well, in, in my opinion, there should be an access road getting down into the back corner anyways.
Yeah, okay.
And with the town center group, work group, originally are brought up to make that continue on to Kenwood Road. But that's out of the question now.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's gonna be interesting. And not only that, the DPW wants the pond and all the land around it for a park.
Did we, Norm, I remember with Jim Susie, wasn't there an issue with, with the, the buildings being so close together as far as Seth was concerned? I mean, these are like twenty-one feet apart, so maybe that's enough. I just don't remember that number.
Yeah, you know, and I don't, I don't remember the particulars. I do remember the, the issue of, you know, being able to get around to the back of the
Yeah.
of the buildings.
Yeah. I'm hoping Seth comments on this if there is an issue, because I know, I think Davis was sent to the police and fire, correct?
It was, yep.
Okay. I just know Jim got around it with firewalls in between the buildings. That's how he did it, and that was fun. I'm okay with that, so.
Yeah, because in his case, he had a code review done by the relevant professional.
Yep.
To show that they could use a different part of the building code and fire safety codes if they constructed it in a certain way, and that's was what they did. They had an engineer who signed, who signed off on that.
Yeah, I just, I just know that NFPA's done a lot of revisions for 2020, so that's the only question. I, I just, because I saw in there that there was a typical twenty-one-foot distance between the houses, which really isn't a lot of space between houses. I mean, it sounds like a lot, but it really isn't.
Oh, I mean, so COVID could go from one house to the next?
I don't even want to talk about COVID.
I know, but that's what bothers me with seeing everything so close.
Yeah, it was the fire thing that I'm worried about, that basically, it's like, it's a cascade effect, being that close, like Worcester with three deckers. Yeah, alright, that's it. I just didn't know if we wanted to give any official comments via email or anything through David to the RDIC, or the HPDD, I'm sorry.
I don't know, I think with the two of you on the.
Alright, we'll do it.
Well, that'll cover it.
Dick, are you, you're on the HPDD, right?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm just an RDIC member that'll be sitting in. Alright, good enough.
Is there anything else to come before the board?
Is, what's the number sixteen?
DTLA submission.
Is that yours, George? David?
Ah, yes. Oh, I didn't send the updated, okay, yeah, is that on there?
It's listed on the agenda.
It's on the public agenda.
Okay.
Oh.
And then there was something else I didn't update, as I wanted to. Okay, so yeah, the DLTA, there were two ideas. Since the accessory apartment's not gonna be taken for this year, that will take that one off the table. The other idea, and I discussed this somewhat with Dick, I believe, this has to do with the scenic road on one-twenty-eight, one-twenty-two. So the proposal that I'm working with the Regional Planning Commission on, along with the policy direction from the planning board, is to see if we can do a DLTA project that takes several recommendations made relative to Route one-twenty-two, the scenic last villages byway, and see if we can implement some of those recommendations made in the open space plan. There was a scenic road plan as well. And to see if we can use those to help economic development and a general tourism effort through some kind of a list of things that they could suggest that would tie the scenic road into downtown area, into the Heights area, into the work of the Town Center Committee, and the work that will be happening with the Master Plan Steering Committee.
I think any help would be great. I like the idea.
Yeah.
So if the board thinks it's wise to pursue this, I will put together a DLTA application, circulate it to the board for review and comment, and then circulate it to the Regional Planning Commission to see if they would choose this as one of their projects at their March meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Great, thank you.
Alright. Number seventeen, Norm. That's mine.
Okay.
On our next, next meeting, can, is there any way we can have Britnell Estates plan somehow to look at the one that's on file?
Ah.
Because I, I took a look at it, and I remember a lot of years ago, there was supposed to have been a bike trail attached to the, from there all the way over to the bike trail, because Blair owned all the property at the time, and I did not see anything, you know, lately. So I'd like to know if it's still there or not.
Um.
And before everything, you know.
We can, you know, I, I guess we can get the, I don't, do we even have Britnell Estates in electronic form?
That's what I'm scared of, Norm. I don't think we do. I think we got papered. It's so old. Is it up in?
It's just a binder.
Is it up in the attic of the town?
No, it's down here.
Okay. I mean, it's been going on since the, what, 2010s?
And my, and my guess is, we, we don't have multiple copies to distribute to the whole board.
Is there some way that maybe next week, try to get hold of Dave and go up there and take a look at it, or?
Well, let me ask you this, are you looking to just see the plan set or the whole filing?
Oh, no, the plan set. I think we should look at the plans, and if he's, he's, he said something about, he's gonna get cranking on that thing right off the bat. I want to make sure.
Okay, I think, and the plans are available in electronic format. I do know that they, they made some revisions. I think they may have, well, with the DCR variance for that subdivision.
Yeah.
There's an electronic copy to be had. Let me see if Blair has it, or if Carl has it.
Okay.
Because, to six-point, Norman, Dave, and the rest of the board, if he's made variances to the subdivision, and we approved one twelve, thirteen, how many ever years ago, the, the update from the seventy-six or seventy-nine version, shouldn't we be looking at that to see if there's any major changes?
Oh, you mean, the width of the road?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah. And, and this is the thing, you know, we, we don't really have a hint what changes have been made, or whether any of those changes really affect our approval.
That's what worries me, Norm.
Yeah.
You know, my, my guess is, at least considering, you know, where he was having the problems, the, the, the biggest changes are probably in, you know, where he is filling wetlands and where he isn't filling wetlands, and where he's replicating wetlands, and all of that kind of stuff.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's Peter, that's on with the CONCON, but my, but to Dick's point, my fear is, where's some road, road width change to mitigate some of that stuff?
That's, you know, that we don't know, which.
And normally where you put the right-of-way to the rail trail, is that where he's gonna put the detention pond now?
Well, I think this is probably the opportunity before the subdivision gets going, is to have an introductory meeting where hopefully he can come in, tell the board what he would like to do, try to capture all the changes that have happened. If it's necessary, have a hearing to allow for modifications, to do that as early as possible, to batch up as many of the changes as possible before there are people living in the, in the, in the subdivision, while he's still, while he still controls it all, to get the modifications done early, and to commit to a final plan set, and then just work from that.
Well, I agree.
That, that's, you know, that's absolutely what we probably should be doing, and I'm even wondering if we shouldn't include on that Bear Hill too.
Yes.
That's what I was wondering.
I think sometime after, I'm getting my second shot, but I, I need to get out a site walk, and I'd like to, I'd like to walk around with somebody else. You might say, with a little bit of knowledge, more knowledge of what's going on and some of this stuff. But I, I feel that we need to make sure we're, we're on top of this thing.
I, I guess, Norm, through you, I'll, I'll ask Peter, has anybody from the CONCON done any latest site walks on that property?
I'm sorry, I've been only half listening. Which property now?
Um, the Britnell Estates off, you know, the nineteen-seventy-six.
Yeah, we, so we gave them a recent order of conditions last year for their wetlands work that's being proposed for that. So we have done some walks. We've, we've taken a look around.
Okay, I just, I just was trying to get a feel for Dick's point of, you know, the, we, I mean, you guys can tell me and Marilyn if I'm wrong, but we haven't done anything with this property in, in eight, ten years, eight years at least?
I want to know what the conditions are. Do you remember what they were?
Uh, we really only looked at the crossings, and the crossings are pretty substantial. I do remember discussions of are they actual, that they're not actually streams, but there's intermittent water flow that acts like a stream, and so they use the stream calculations for them, which seems appropriate. And we looked, we, I vaguely, I do remember looking at both crossings going around, although one we didn't get down in deep and dirty, and because, because it was, we, we overlooked them at the edge of what is now the road. And go, and climbing down into that would have been a substantial amount of work, so we didn't look up at close at one of them, but we could tell what's going on just from the lay of the land, because we did it in fall, so our, actually, it might have been earlier than fall, might have been late summer.
And, Norm, do you remember what our conditions were?
Ah, don't have a hint.
I think that's one of the reasons why we need to get it pulled out and take a look at.
I think so. So.
Alright. And my number eighteen is all meetings will be in person. No, but I I would really like to get back to.
Dick, based on the plant, on the select boards meeting and update from the, from Seth. I don't see that happening if we want to use the library or anything until summer.
Oh, no, I know the library is going to be used.
It's April.
But to me, you're you're still got the wood studio or something like that or whatever, even our, our, even our hallway.
Well, we'll have to be dodging the four thousand people coming into Rutland over the next two to three months.
No, they're 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 hoping to move outside in April, and even if it gets extended to May.
Yeah.
At that point. The library should be open for business, I mean, in terms of meetings. Many, many, many boards are having the exact same complaint.
Ah, okay, good. Well, we could always, now, i- i- unless the COVID restrictions get listed, that the room next to Dave is just too small. Isn't it, we don't have enough room to.
Yeah, there's no way.
Yeah, that's too small.
What happened to the downstairs of the town hall?
That's a secured space now because that's where they're storing the vaccine.
Oh, that's right too, okay, the vaccine's down there. All right.
And the wood studio is bigger certainly than the other room than the than Dave's conference room, but. I don't know how many people could fit there, honestly, I haven't done, I haven't even looked at them at the dimensions enough.
The heck with it, we'll, we'll use the town administrator's office.
Okay.
Well, okay, you wanted, you want a really more interesting idea, how about the upstairs in the town hall?
What elevator?
Yeah.
No, that's a good idea, I wouldn't mind.
It's probably still a mess, but I mean, it's it's a, it's a large space.
Yes, it is.
Hey, we used to be up there.
Yep. The good old days. All right, so, uh.
Let me make a motion.
Dave, you're gonna be uptown tomorrow morning, so come up to sign or sometime?
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, um. I'll be in the office at nine fifteen. Did I have to step up for a meeting? After that, I'll be back, in the afternoon, it would be better, or I can leave the, um. I can leave the Mylar at the town clerk's office after I get in at nine fifteen.
Okay. One way or another, I'll come up, try to get up there in the morning.
Yeah, why don't I just leave the Mylar with the town clerk?
Okay.
Or you could leave it in the conference room.
Or I could leave it in the conference room, that that's, that's a good idea too.
All right.
Because we, yeah.
And I'll leave the copy I got here with you.
Great, I appreciate that, thanks.
All right, I'm ready, is everybody else ready?
More than ready.
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, Marilyn.
Aye.
Kim.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Norm, aye, we are adjourned.